This conference will now be recorded.
I want to start out by acknowledging that I am working on my tablet alone and therefore I have a little bit of hard time seeing both all of you and the agenda, so please bear with me if I appear to be lost from time to time. We'd like to start out with introductions. I'm Zan Ojero, Board Chair for 2021.
Anthony Wise, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Good morning. Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Corney, County Council.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Tom McGuire, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Okay, and we have guests with us today. And on screen is Eileen McBullen, Biden Moses, Misha Mayor from Oregon Department of Human Services, and Peggy Lynch, Lady of Ruin Voters. So we will, and Deena Eldridge from Community Services Consortium. And I will give you all a chance to further introduce yourselves as you speak for the board. At the moment, I would like to acknowledge the fact that Benton County is on the traditional territories of the Kalaküa Peoples and Alsee Peoples, and that we honor and respect their traditions and hope to honor them as we move forward in our decision-making as well. The Kalaküa Peoples and Alsee are with us still in the Confederated Tribe of Soletz and Grand Robt. So with that, are there any other announcements? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will now review and approve the agenda. I can tell you that we will be adding an executive session at the end of this meeting, most likely after the information sharing between board members and county administrator. And we'll be going into executive session under Oregon Revised Statute 192.6602E. So that is the only change that I see at this point in time. Any other comments on the agenda? Okay, then we'll consider it accepted and move on. Work session, item 4.1. Thank you to all of you service providers for being with us this morning. This is the fourth in our series of sessions, hearing from folks that support unhoused and vulnerably housed people in Benton County, providing a way of services. And so we look forward to hearing from you. I know that some of you have time constraints, so Misha, we are going to have you go first, followed by Deena, and then Eileen. And what we're really looking for this morning is to hear from each of you about how you support people in unhoused community and what services you provide to keep people from becoming unhoused, and how you see yourselves working with the county and the city on the HOPE Advisory Board's plans to address homelessness, and how you collaborate with other community-based organizations that work to serve unhoused and vulnerably housed communities in Benton County. One of the things that's also very much on our minds is the regional nature of some of these issues, and the fact that there is a lot of movement between Lincoln County and Lynn County and Benton County in unhoused community, partly because of Samaritan Health Services and the nature of the hospital system, as well as movement up and down the I-5 corridor. And we are always in the back of our minds thinking about what we can do more regionally and how we can think long-term when it comes to addressing these issues. So if you have any thoughts on those topics, we welcome them as well. We have an hour for this discussion, so without any further ado, I will pass the baton to Misha.
Thank you. All right, I have to figure out how I share my presentation here. I don't see a share button. Have I been given those rights, or will somebody else share the presentation for me?
Just one moment, and I'll arrange for you to be the presenter.
Okay, great. Well, while I'm waiting for that, I didn't have a chance to talk to Commissioner Ojero too much before this presentation, so this is an adapted presentation from one I've done in the communities in the past. It talks about a lot of the services that we do, but not necessarily addressing specifically some of the things that she talked about. Can you see the presentation? I think I saw maybe a thumbs up. My screen got very small for you. Okay. I'm going to take my camera off because sometimes with bandwidth, that just works better. And I do have the chat window up in case there's questions that pop up. I did want to mention, ODHS is not a part of the HOPE Council, but I do attend the HOPE meetings as much as possible and just to stay in the know so that I'm aware of what's going on there. And we do work with many of the organizations that are a part of HOPE, and so we are a part of it in that regard. And they definitely know how to reach out to us if there's questions. So I'm here with Oregon Department of Human Services Self-Sufficiency Programs. And my name is Misha. I'm a Community Partnership Coordinator with the Oregon Department of Human Services Self-Sufficiency Programs. At ODHS, we have a vision of safety, health, and independence for all Oregonians. And there's many programs that ODHS offers. We have aging people with disabilities, developmental disabilities, child welfare, self-sufficiency, and vocational rehabilitation. Today, our focus is going to be on the self-sufficiency program, so if there are questions about other programs, while you're more than welcome to ask me, I would need to find those answers for you because I represent self-sufficiency. Before I move on, I did want to let you know that this presentation was sent, and I think you're going to receive it, so you have access to it. There are links in the presentation, such as on this page. You'll see some food assistance, cash assistance links. Those are there so that if you want to learn a little more in depth than what I'm able to present today, you can click on those links, and that'll bring you right to the website that gives you more details on these programs. So I just wanted to let that be known, that you'll have access to that. So our four main categories or programs that we offer here in Lynn, Benton, Lincoln are SNAP, otherwise known as food assistance, which SNAP stands for Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. And we have TANF, also known as cash assistance, and that stands for Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. We offer childcare assistance, which is employment-related daycare. And we also offer Domestic Violence Survivor Services, which is, we call TADVS, which is Temporary Assistance for Domestic Violence Survivors. So I'm going to take a few moments to tell you about each of these programs and some of the services that come along with these programs. So SNAP is assistance to purchase food. Eligibility for this assistance is based on income and the number of eligible people in the household. The income limit is 185% of the federal poverty level. Undocumented citizens are ineligible for SNAP, but other household members may be eligible. That just means that, for example, let's say the parents are undocumented, but they have children that were born in the United States. The children may be eligible for SNAP, and we'll look at the eligibility. But not the eligibility of the parents, but the eligibility of, like the amount of SNAP that would be available to them would be based on the number of household members that are citizens in the household, such as the children. So that's what that means. ERDC, which is Employment Related Daycare, assists working families with childcare costs. Each family pays a co-pay, and that's determined by their income and household size. Adults applying for this program do not have to meet specific citizenship requirements, but the children must meet certain qualifying factors. So this program is for the children, and that's why we're not looking at citizenship for the parents. We're really looking at the children, because it's about making sure the children are cared for. TANF, which is commonly referred to as welfare or cash assistance, is a grant and case management for families. The eligibility for this is 38% of the federal poverty level, so that's compared to 185% for SNAP. There's a big difference there. Really, TANF families are folks who don't have any income at all, or very, very little. And they do need to have dependent children to qualify for this. And really, the purpose is to assist the family and to help stabilize them. Cash assistance is intended just to meet very basic needs. Non-citizens, including undocumented citizens who do not meet the qualifying factors for TANF, can still be eligible for their qualified children. So we're looking at it very similarly to as we do for the other programs. With TANF, you get so much money per person in the household. So if the parents don't qualify, then there's no money allotted to those adults, but the money would be based on the number of qualified children, and that's how that piece works. The jobs program assists families receiving TANF with employment. So we're going to talk more about this program, but that is a piece of TANF. The assistance can include work experience, supportive work, and short-term training. And there's also some other supportive services, such as transportation and childcare. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. So TANF and SNAP support services. There are support services available for TANF recipients and some SNAP-only recipients who volunteer for the STEP program. Support services include working with community partners online skills, parenting, housing, job seeking, and more. Support services can help with common job seeker needs, such as transportation, like gas money or bus passes, clothing for interviewing their work, identification, tools for work, and school costs, such as fees and books. And then we have another program, TADVS, which provides temporary assistance for domestic violence survivors with children who are or folks who are pregnant. So they either have children or are pregnant. For example, this funding can be used for housing, relocating costs, emergency shelter, changing of the locks in the house, anything that can help them with safety. The income limit is the same as TANF, so about 38% of the federal poverty level, but there's a big difference. The income is determined by what's available to the survivor. So there's a lot of flexibility with this program. We know that some survivors, while they may be working, may not have access to their money. Maybe their money is in a joint account with the abuser, or maybe it goes right into the abuser's account. Maybe they have responsibilities that they're in charge to take care of with their funds, like paying the rent and utilities, and so that eats a big chunk of their money that's available. So what we do is we look at the money that's actually available to the survivor to determine whether or not they are eligible. So that really does add some flexibility to this. And there are people who, you know, make a fair amount of money. For example, somebody who works for the school district might qualify for this program because they don't have access to their funds. They might be working, but they don't have access. We do partner with our local DV service agencies to provide support and safety planning. So for Benton County, that would be CARDA. The main goal of this program is survivor safety. I will say that there is a direct correlation between homeless and DV. There are many folks out there who are houseless that may be houseless because they were experiencing DV at some point in time in their life. And DV for us at ODHS is a pretty broad term. We're not just looking at intimate partner violence. We're looking at, you know, what was going on in the home. So it could be a roommate situation where there was some domestic violence. It could be with family. So we're really, it's a very broad definition that we look at for that one. Employment and Training Programs. So there's three programs that we're going to talk a little bit about. JOBS, which includes stabilized living, TANF work experience, family support and connections, JOBS PLUS, and STEP. Stabilized Living is a specialized program through JOBS that provides the housing advocate and assistance. It's contracted through, or we contract an advocate through the Community Services Consortium. This advocate works with a family who has unstable housing or is unhoused, and helps them apply for housing programs, helps them look for housing, talk with landlords, sometimes advocate. They do some education with them about what it means to be a good tenant and budgeting. They, let's see, sometimes they even help them move. It's a very flexible program in a lot of ways. They're able to help support families who need that support in a lot of different ways. It's been a really neat program. So that's something that we have available for our TANF families who have that housing need. Then we have TANF work experience, which is unpaid part-time positions at a real employer work site. Hours are limited, usually 20 hours or less, depending on their benefit amount. There's no time limit, but generally families are in these for two, four months. And ODHS covers work compensation, or workers' compensation. So really, the purpose of this is to give them experience, something to add to their resume, a reference. There's a lot of families who, if they really enjoy their work and they do real well, that they get a job offer from that employer, which is awesome. Some learn that maybe that's not the kind of work that they want to do, and so it's a good experience to, just to see what that kind of work is. We have Family Support and Connections, which is a contracted program. We work with Family Tree Relief Nursery. Services are designed to strengthen families and support effective parenting. There's no income limit for this. We do generally refer from our TANF family list, but 10% of this program can actually be from other families. Families can self-refer, or they can come from community agencies. So if you know a family that could use FSNC services, it's recommended that you assist them with the referral and help articulate the needs, which is basically calling a family tree and saying, hey, I've got this family, and I think it might be a really good fit for this program. JOBS PLUS is a really neat program. It's for TANF participants who are work-ready. Yeah, that's who's eligible. So work-ready, what does that mean? That means that maybe they've done work experience already, and they were a great employee. They were at work on time. They were reliable. Those are the folks that we would consider work-ready, and they might be eligible for this JOBS PLUS program. So what these are are full-time positions, 30 hours or more at an actual employer's site. SNAP and TANF benefits are suspended because the worker's making actual wages. They're suspended because they're over income, basically. An individual education account is established for that participant, and access is available after finishing the program and finding regular unsubsidized employment, and that might be at the place they were just working at potentially, or it could be a different place. JOBS PLUS positions are subsidized, so the employer will receive partial wage and payroll tax reimbursement. So it's a great program for employers, too, because they're getting a worker without having to shell out all those extra costs for the worker. The STEP program, which stands for SNAP Training and Employment Program, is a voluntary program for SNAP recipients. Families in the TANF JOBS program cannot participate in STEP. And the reason there is just that it covers a lot of the same services, and so, you know, you would be in one or the other. So the nice thing about STEP is that there's not a requirement for dependents being in the household for this program. A single person or older adults that don't have children in the house can qualify for the STEP program. Example providers include Lynn-Benton Community College, Oregon Coast Community College, Community Services Consortium, WorkSource, and more. And components vary depending on the provider, but can include case-managed job search, job search training, vocational training, adult basic education like TED, literacy, numeracy, and English language acquisition, and job retention. And there are support services that come along with this, just like the TANF program, help with getting identification or transportation, those things. So how to apply. Right now at ODHS, we are encouraging folks to apply online or call as much as possible, just for safety reasons. But our offices are open. We know that not all families have access to a computer or are comfortable using the computer, so the doors are open. We have been open throughout the pandemic. I know there's been some different messaging out there that might have been confusing, but we have been open and we will continue to be open for folks to apply in person if that's their preference. We have this great new system called ONE, where it's one application, and you can apply for all services. So that's the benefit of using that online application. You're not applying using different applications. You just put your information in once, and as information changes, you update it. You don't actually have to fill out a whole new application, which is pretty cool. I did link some principal applications on here, so for folks that are uncomfortable using a computer, you can actually just click on the cash assistance link, and it'll pull up the application for that specific program. And that's an option as well. There is a no wrong door policy at ODHS. That has always been the case, but it was limited before, because before we had the ONE system, it was limited. We only had access to the folks in our area. But now that it's web-based, you know, if a family is visiting from another area in Oregon and their EBT card isn't working, they can walk into any office, and we can look them up, even if, you know, their home location is 100 miles away. We can look them up, find out what's going on, assist them, help them reapply if it's because their benefits expired, help them get a new card, whatever the case may be. They really can go into any office, including aging peoples with disabilities offices, as long as it's the DHS office, they should be able to help them with the application, which adds a lot of flexibility. So I know it was a quick presentation, a lot of information, but I'll open it up for any questions.
Pat? Misha, towards the beginning of the presentation, the SNAP program, I know you had to be a citizen to qualify. Are rules like that coming from the federal government?
Yeah, I mean, these programs are all have federal requirements. So yes, but there are, there's some flexibility with that. For example, like I said, if there's a family and the children maybe meet those qualifications, or maybe there's somebody who is a legal permanent resident, they've been here long enough. That's how the amount is determined for the household. And then how the household uses those benefits is up to them. So if that means it's supporting the whole household, that's kind of up to the family. So that's, I guess, how some families get around that piece. It can still help the whole family, even though it does affect the amount that they receive. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Misha, do you also work fairly closely with the Cascades West Council of Governments? Is it primarily the aging and disability side of things?
Yes. So in our area, COG, so the Council of Governments, has been contracted by the state to provide our aging peoples with disability services. So they are utilizing the ONE system as well. It's a little bit different than working with APD in Salem, because that's an actual state agency, but we do work with COG, and they offer these programs through them.
Thank you. It gets a little confusing sometimes when I try to understand where people need to go for what, and...
Yes. Well, they can go into a DHS office for sure. Yes, well, they can go into a DHS office for sure. We will, once we get them in the system, let's say they came to the Corvallis office off Research Way and they were somebody who qualified for additional services that aging people with disabilities would offer, they're gonna, they're gonna get that referral. We're gonna let them know that, hey, this person's in the system and they'll look them up and they'll, they'll reach out to see if, you know, there's additional needs. Because our sufficiency offices are not, we're not, we're not experts in all of the programs that aging people and disabilities offers. So all the services that COG offers, we just would determine the eligibility and then any case management needs, caregiver needs, that would need to happen through the COG.
Thank you. Nisha, do you have questions? No, no questions. Just thank you for your presentation and I appreciate that you sent it ahead of time. I was like looking stuff over, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, on the daycare program, I know that's a kind of, in general, lack of capacity in the, in the whole system. Do your, does this program help build that capacity or just puts more strain on kind of inadequate system?
Capacity as in childcare options available or capacity as in like limited dollars available for participants?
The, the supply side, the...
Okay.
Amount of daycare available.
Sure. So I know that there are some different initiatives that we're trying to help and work with or partners in working with to try to help increase the amount of providers that are available. ERDC, in order, families to use that, that benefit have to choose a provider that has been state-approved. They can't just use it for any provider. There's a list of state providers that have gone through our requirements and background checks and whatnot. Anybody can apply to be that, a state-approved provider, even family members. So if somebody, you know, really wants aunt, auntie to be their provider, auntie can go through the process and become a provider if, if that's, if that's the, the way the family wants to go. But they, they do have to be approved because the state wants to make sure that it's a safe house and there's, you know, with the background. And they do, they do, like, I think they do walk through the house and everything. There's some steps there. So that's the hard thing about ERDC or TANF childcare, which doesn't cost them anything, is that they have to find a provider who's state-approved, who has a spot available. And that can be tricky, that's true.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I, I see you at various different meetings and I know you are a great, what is your title again, community partnership coordinator in the sense that you, you make it your business to know what everything, everyone else is doing and to help fill in the gaps. And I think that's fantastic. It makes a difference.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for inviting me here today and to make a presentation. And my contact information is on this PowerPoint, so do feel free to reach out if you have further questions.
Thank you.
All right, and I'm gonna see if I can figure out how to unshare, or is that gonna happen on your end?
I, I don't know. Erica?
Yes, I'll take care of that, thanks. Or actually, you should have a button that says "stop sharing" down at the bottom of your screen, but I'll transfer who's the presenter.
Okay, and next we have Deana Eldridge with us from Community Services Consortium.
Thank you, Zan. Thank you for inviting us. I'm Deana Eldridge. I'm the Housing Services Manager for Community Services Consortium. And as you know, Community Services Consortium is your local community action agency. We serve Lynn Benton and Lincoln County, that entire region. I don't have a written presentation for you today or any kind of PowerPoint, so I'm just gonna speak about what we have and happy to answer questions at the end. So CFC gets numerous different sources of grant money, state money, federal money, some private foundation money, that is meant to serve people in housing situations, both those who are unhoused and those who are trying to prevent themselves from becoming unhoused. So we, we have programs that serve both communities. As far as our, how we fit in the niche of serving the unhoused, basically what CFC runs are programs that HUD defines as rapid rehousing programs. What that really means is we take people who are in an unhoused situation, either at a shelter or totally unhoused outside, and we move them directly from that situation into a rental, a theoretically permanent housing situation. Old models of housing that date back, you know, decades or more, like people lose their housing, they end up at an emergency shelter, and then maybe their first step out of the shelter is to go to something called transitional housing, where they live for a temporary amount of time, they get services for a finite amount of time, and in a lot of cases, they may even have to leave that housing after a designated amount of time and then go into a permanent rental situation. So HUD did research, you know, years ago and found out that that isn't the greatest model for everyone and that most people, especially those who've been unhoused for a shorter period of time, are better served by just going from the unhoused situation back to permanent house. You know, there's no need for all those steps. So that's really our niche in the housing services world. CFC has never run a shelter, but we do pass funds through to many shelter partners. In particular, since COVID, we were getting a lot more federal assistance that really their target was helping those who were unhoused during the pandemic in particular. So we now subcontract with local providers such as Corvallis Housing First. We work with them on a multitude of programs. One of the first things we subcontracted with them was the region's only federally-funded permanent supportive housing project, which we call Corvallis Permanent Supportive Housing. It's a continuum of care grant directly from HUD. And the way the arrangement works is CFC is the direct grantee, but we subcontract with Corvallis Housing First. It's basically what we call, what HUD calls a sponsor-based type of program where Corvallis Housing First, in most cases, provides the housing for the people that are gonna be housed from unhoused situations. And permanent supportive housing, as you may have heard in other places, is really aimed at people who are experiencing chronic homelessness. And HUD defines chronic homelessness as having been unhoused for at least 12 months, either in a row or cumulatively over the last three years, and having some type of disability, documented disability. So those are usually the most vulnerable people, obviously, especially if they're living unhoused. And they need not only the financial assistance, they need a lot of supportive services and intensive connection to resources in order to maintain the housing that we get them into. So Corvallis Housing First staff fill that role. They look for the eligible clients, they do the paperwork, and then if they have an opening in one of their buildings, most likely the Van Buren House is the one that we've been using for most of those clients, then they move them in and CFC basically pays the ongoing rental subsidy directly to their property manager. We do a little bit of the admin, we're still responsible for the reporting and things like that. And they are the ones who work with those individuals every day, one-on-one. And those are, our target is five chronically homeless individuals. And currently, they've, they've overachieved in their first year of that grant, they've had seven. So they actually had eight at one point, but one, one gentleman moved out to a, a different housing opportunity. And they do have at least, I think it's just one client right now who's living in scattered site housing, in other words, housing that's owned and run by a, a different landlord. So there's that. But we also have subcontracted funds for them to do street outreach, in other words, kind of case management to your other shelter network partners like Unity Shelter, who's another one of our sub-grantees and partners. So they do outreach to the people at the men's shelter, the women's shelter, Safe Place, the camp, the micro shelters, and now they have their new motel shelter, which is called Third Street Commons. And that particular project was bought with turnkey funds, which was some state funds, but we went for an ESG, Emergency Solutions Grant from Oregon Housing and Community Services, and we are subcontracting out a large portion of that grant to help actually run that shelter. In other words, pay for the staffing, pay for a lot of the needed rehab that needs to be done to meet, you know, code and ADA compliance and things like that. And we're also studying with community, the Corvallis State House Dropping Center. They've been working outreach, obviously, for those that are unhoused. And they've started doing, for the past year, they've been doing coordinated entry assessments on those that were interested and putting those into our system. And that offers those unhoused people an opportunity to be considered for projects like CFC's Rapid Rehousing Program and the Permanent Supportive Housing Program that we co-run with Corvallis Housing First. So we're expanding with them, we're, we're gonna get their new grant with the ESG funds for them to hire someone who will actually coordinate sort and all the various street outreach activities that are going on in your community, in your, in Corvallis. And so we're very happy to do that. So again, that's not something that CFC has done directly, but we are happy to partner and support our providers who do that. Another organization we've supported for the past, throughout the pandemic really, is CHANCE, because as you know, when social distancing became an issue in the congregate shelters, one of the models that communities turned to was motel sheltering. So CHANCE had always done a small amount of their own motel sheltering for people, and we had a really small little contract with them originally, where we would occasionally place our clients with them. It was easy because they had the connections with all the local motels, they had the contracts, and it was easy for them to just, you know, do these very quick placements. So when money came for sheltering during the height of the pandemic, that is the partner we turned to again. And so they've had contracts with us in all three counties to shelter people in motels, basically in lieu of a regular shelter bed. So that actually, I think, allowed a lot, a lot of people to maintain sheltering so that even during the pandemic, when the men's shelter had to lower their census so dramatically and CLI also, we were still able to pick up a lot of those folks and keep them with a roof over their head and hopefully out of the weather. So we are continuing with those kind of efforts. So in general, what our programs in-house that we do with the unhoused, they kind of fall into two categories, short-term interventions and basically medium-term, I guess you'd call it, not super long-term, although permanent supportive housing is definitely considered longer-term. So most of our short-term interventions for those who have found themselves homeless involve maybe people who, you know, had a setback, lost their original housing opportunity for whatever reason, and maybe either didn't know about our homeless prevention services or couldn't access them. So now they're unhoused, but they have some income, they've identified a new place to live, but really the stumbling block to getting them back into permanent housing is those big costs upfront, like security deposit, first and last month's rent, maybe some really short-term, like three months or less of rental assistance to get back on their feet. So we have numerous programs that can do that for people. And we also have our longer-term program, which is, it's a different model in most cases. People who need either eviction prevention or who need a short-term security deposit type of intervention, they contact CFC. And they say, this is what I need, and we screen them, and if they meet our program's criteria, we set them up with an intake appointment and we go from there. But our longer-term rapid rehousing programs, of which we have two, but they're both, they're different federal funds, but they're both federally-funded, they're aimed at people who are unhoused and we are mandated to serve people off of our coordinated entry system. So coordinated entry, you probably may have heard of that. That is a, that is a concept that HUD came up with, but in reality, what it is, is it's governed by the local continuum of care. And Lynn Benton and Lincoln County are all part of the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, which is a large balanced state continuum governance structure for 26 counties in Oregon, the quote-unquote "most rural counties" in Oregon. So coordinated entry is basically an assessment, and it's meant to gauge people's current situation, their vulnerabilities, in particular, if they stay unhoused. So there's two parts to what we do when we assess people. We have something we call a base assessment, which is questions that we ask. A lot of it is just data gathering, basic HUD data elements, things like your name, age, birthdate, race, ethnicity, we want to know those things. Also to see the trends in our community, who's experiencing homelessness, are their populations experiencing it, they're overrepresented in the community or in homelessness. Questions about domestic violence background or history, there's other things like, have they ever been in a foster care situation? That's one of the known risk factors for experiencing homelessness as an adult. So various questions on the base assessment side, and then there's a vulnerability tool that the continuum has chosen, that we didn't create and it's not mandated by HUD, but it was judged to be pretty effective back in the year that we chose it. And it's known as the VI-SADAT. It's basically a vulnerability index. Don't know the entire acronym, but it asks a lot of questions of people in basic categories like their housing history, their health history, risk behaviors, wellness, things like that. And depending on their answers, it generates a score at the end that is correlates with a range that is supposed to indicate what the best intervention for that person or that family would be. So if people score very, very low on the, the vulnerability index, they might not need a longer-term intervention to get back into housing, but they might be great for one of our short-term programs. If they score in the mid-range, which HUD calls the rapid rehousing range, then those are the folks that we are looking for, for our two longer-term programs. If they score in the higher end of the range, that's permanent supportive housing range, and that's meant for like the program I was talking about that we do with Corvallis Housing First, where most likely those folks will need long-term, if not permanent, rental support and intensive support services like case management to stay successfully housed. So what we're looking for again is the people in the mid-range. So when we have openings in those projects, we consult the list that is generated of all the folks in each county that have gotten that assessment. And so we review their scores, we review how long they've been homeless and some other eligibility factors. And basically, instead of us, them applying to us or calling And basically, instead of us, them applying to us or calling us, we reach out to them. So we go down the list and we start calling, um, the pope, the people that are on it, kind of verifying that, are you still experiencing homelessness? Um, you know, what's your current income? Once in a while, people have rehoused, so that's great. We move on to the next person on that list. Um, and then if it sounds like they're still in need of that longer-term assistance, we offer them application to the program. So that's how we begin. So we're out looking for, to connect with those people off, um, that homeless list, basically, that we generate through coordinated entry. So in those programs, um, we help those people find housing. We have housing advocates that are trained to help people do housing search. We, they are trained to help, um, advocate for people who may have addictions on their background and other things on a background check that landlords aren't always drove the sea. But we, we advocate for them and more importantly, we teach them to advocate for themselves. So that in the future, if this, you know, when we're out of their lives, they will have this skill. So we help with active housing search. We find them places to live. We help them with the moving costs. And then we do an ongoing rental subsidy, very similar to what a housing authority, housing choice voucher does. We pay a certain percentage of the rent. They pay some percentage of the rent, assuming they have some income based on, uh, their income. And then the key thing is that we work with them during the course of that program to help them achieve the goals that they've set for how they want to achieve stability by the end. Typically, we start with a 12-month contract on those. Um, if they're not, you know, if, if they do really well and they've increased their, their financial resources by the end of 12 months and they're ready to pay that rent on their own, then that may be the end of the program and we exit them to a successful exit. Um, if not, if they're still working on it, maybe they've had some setbacks or what have you, um, we might roll them over, as we say, and offer them another typically six to 12 more months to get that stability. Um, with one of our projects, um, the continuum of care one, it's called supportive housing. We are lucky enough to have what we call a preference with Lynn Benton Housing Authority to where, um, those participants, as, you know, typically after the first year they're on our program with our case manager, if they've stabilized, if they've gone through some sort of renter education, either through our rent well classes that we offer to the community or with just the case manager one-on-one, kind of gotten their feet back on, under them, but you know, maybe they're not totally self-sufficient yet. Then we offer, um, we make the reference to the housing authority and they basically go to the top of the section eight list. So it's a section eight preference. So that ideally, by the time their two years is up, they have trans, transitioned on to section eight. So they may not have the house, the case management going on after they go to section eight, but at least they'll have the ongoing assistance with rent. So, uh, you know, our challenge is to try and get them into low enough rent situations upfront so that they're able to stay in the unit, not have to move again and meet, um, the fair market rent limits that all these programs have imposed. So, um, that's how those programs work. And, uh, let me see, how do we collaborate? Well, um, we collaborate with all of our partners very closely these days. Where we are on, um, housing boards in each county. Um, as far as HOPE goes, my executive director, Peggy McGuire, is on the HOPE committee and represents us well. She has a housing background, so she's an excellent representative for everything that we do. And, um, just in Benton County alone, we work really well with, um, a lot of its Corvallis housing folks. So Peggy and I have regular monthly meetings with Tracy Ullman and Brigida Olson, where we just do check-ins on, uh, what's the state of, you know, housing out there? This is more probably from a, a prevention side and the landlord point-of-view side. Um, you know, how are landlords feeling during the pandemic? You know, how are they, what are they saying about our homeless prevention programs, which, you know, are hugely funded right now, just to keep people from experiencing homelessness in the, at all, because we don't want to add to those numbers. So, um, um, and, um, we also meet with Julie Orina on a regular basis. So we're happy to collaborate. We collaborate in all three counties and yes, I think there is a need for the region to work together on solutions, because I hold, um, regular quarterly meetings of shelter providers for the region. And the whole impetus for it was that, um, they needed an outlet to actually talk to each other. And there was issues with, you know, people blindly showing up at each other's shelters saying, well, I couldn't get housed in Benton County, so they told me to come to Lynn and vice versa. And so it's really been awesome. It's a, it's a place they can all work together and, um, meet each other, develop connections and kind of look at the issue holistically around the three counties. So I think I hit most of your points, but questions?
Thank you, Dina. You, you all have so much going on in this space. It's, uh, it's always complicated and, uh, lots of different funding streams. Nancy?
Hi, Dina. Thank you for coming today. Um, and I apologize if I missed this, uh, because I know you mentioned your initial assessment. Um, but with your, how does your capacity versus the demand, uh, what does that look like? Are you able to help everyone that walks through the door? Do you guys have a waiting list?
Um, you know, sure, the answer is absolutely have, we've never been able to help everybody who walks through the door, unfortunately. Um, my best statistics, I will just contest, come from pre-pandemic, but this is basically how it shook out in our, um, statistical, uh, assessments of the people that contact us for housing, whether we serve them or not. So generally speaking, of all the calls that we get from the community, about 75% are for homeless prevention. So in other words, they're housed and facing addiction and they want to, you know, they need to pay their back rent off or something to avoid that. Or that will also include people who are doubled up, because in HUD's, um, definitions, if you're couch surfing, living with friends and family, but you have a roof over your head, even if it's temporary, you're not literally homeless. So you're still in the prevention bucket to HUD. So it's really a mix of housed and very precariously housed people that come to us. But they're the, usually the folks that go, hey, I have to get out of, you know, I can't stay with my mom anymore, but I found a place I think I can afford. I just need help with moving costs, that kind of thing. So that's about 75% of the calls that we get. And of the people that call with that issue, uh, unfortunately, you know, pre-pandemic with our funding, we might be able to serve about 25% of those callers. A lot of the time, what the issue is, is, um, if they are unhoused, meaning couch surfing doubled up, um, with our short-term interventions, we just don't have the capacity to help every homeless person do housing search. We, we have that resource for, um, our longer-term people that are spiking of the rapid rehousing folks. We also have always offered that to, uh, a certain clientele who are having a hard time with housing authority vouchers, look? And now we're doing a, a very big, um, work with them in these new emergency housing vouchers that the housing authority got. But the, the average person who calls us and says, I'm a home unhoused and I can't find a place to live and I don't know what to do, we don't have enough people to help everybody who's unhoused find a place to live. So usually, and, and, but we want to help the people that we know we can help. So instead of waiting for the first caller to call to find a place to live and making everybody stop while all those people search, we triage our short-term services for people who've identified a place to live and it looks like they can afford it, at least in the short term. Those are the folks we want to help because that gets them out of someone's couch and, you know, back into permanent housing. On the homeless side, people who call us who, um, are unhoused of, in whatever manner, are literally homeless, that's probably only 25% of the people who, um, call us. However, because of our interventions, we are able to serve, uh, 45% of those folks. So it's a much higher percentage of people that we get to serve. So in the long run, it kind of balances out, but we are able to serve more people who are experiencing unhoused conditions. Um, you know, with COVID, uh, I mean, I went from a budget, an annual budget of maybe two and a half million, uh, just for what I do, and now it's 50 million in a year. So, uh, you know, we got 20 million or 18.8 million, literally, which is the Oregon Emergency Rental Assistance Program that you've probably heard about on TV in the news, that state-funded program. So that's just one, and that's about the fourth one we've had. So, um, it's still, you know, we've, it, we've always figured that even agency-wide, we likely only serve 20% of the people who could literally qualify because of funding, hopefully.
Funding and housing availability?
Yes, that's our huge, you know, we could serve even more people who are unhoused and even more people who are doubled up if there was more, um, availability, more vacancy, definitely. That is, that is the biggest hamper to everyone in the, in, in Oregon, really.
Nancy, did you have a question? I think I cut you off.
Oh, that was basically my question is what is, what is the bottleneck then? Is it the housing? Is it staff? But it sounds like, um, the availability of housing was the answer there.
It's really the housing. It's really the housing. Um, uh, you know, Lincoln County, I know you guys are, you're all focused on Benton. Uh, Lincoln is probably the hardest county that we have. The vacancy rate is like less than 1%. And after the fires, it became even worse. Um, Benton, uh, frankly, when students, in the past year, when the students were learning remotely, your county suddenly had a, a pretty good increase in availability comparatively anyway. You went from about a 2% vacancy rate or less to five. And I'll just tell you that during the last 18 months, we, um, placed a lot of our homeless clients in Benton County, because that's where the vacancies were, more so than even Lynn, where I'm at. Um, so, but I think, you know, all of the counties now are pretty much back to or going to be back to under 1%. And when you have that going on, you just, it's difficult, it's not impossible, but it's certainly a huge limiting factor.
Very interesting. Well, thank you, Peggy. Um, you, um, and the Community Services Consortium are really instrumental in all of this work, um, given your role as a community action agency and, um, in the, uh, role of continuum of care, um, and just by virtue of, um, the relationships that you and Peggy and your team have, um, with all of the partners. So we value that immensely and, uh, look forward to continuing to work closely on these issues.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, in the interest of time, I'm going to move us on, um, and get to Irene. Um, and, um, Dina, I appreciate it. It's always, I always learn more every time I hear of what you have to say about your programs. Irene?
Hi, thanks for inviting me and, um, I, oh, I'm getting, uh, okay. Um, thanks for inviting me and, uh, I will keep it short. And I do have a presentation, so I don't know if I need access to share it. Um, and one thing I will say is I'm the executive director at Bynum Ozone Center, and I've been in that position for about 18 months. But I think what a lot of people don't know is I was, um, I used to work at the Center Against Rape and Domestic Violence about 20 years ago. So, um, in some ways, it's like coming home. So, uh, I don't know how I have access to share.
Uh, you should be able to go ahead now.
Um, mm-hmm. Oh, this is terrible. I usually don't use this one.
There's a button at the bottom of your screen?
I got it. Maybe. I wasn't prepared for it. Well, maybe I'll just try, instead of doing this, so I don't take up your time, because I know we're a little bit up, up behind. So I'll just go ahead and, and talk about it. But, um, what we do is, uh, we just recently adopted a strategic plan in, um, in August. And our mission is to help people through hardship, engaging the community to build resilience and improve wellbeing. And we have, you're probably most curious about our programs that are specific to people who are unhoused, of course, but I wanted to let you know too, that our vision is to, um, in our ideal future, more people in our community are on a path to the life that they want, and we are a partner in their success. So a lot of people think of us as a crisis situation, um, center, and we really are. But, um, in a way, we're kind of moving in the direction of helping people be a little more sustainable moving forward. And I'll kind of explain how that fits with what we do. Um, because when we did our strategic plan, one of the things that came back from our, uh, interviews with external partners is that we tend to say yes when a lot of other organizations say no, and that, um, we're a lot more flexible, I think, because we're smaller and, um, but we're accessible in a way that a lot of other places aren't just, I, yeah, just, I think it's because that we're small. Um, and a lot of, we have a lot of trust in the community, people who come into our center and people who volunteer and donate to our center as well. And that we, uh, also give people a lot of choices and, and we don't, we're very, very low barrier. We don't ask a lot of questions, although we are new to collecting data, we still don't ask that many questions. Um, basically, if you tell us that you need help, then we'll help you. Um, and your, the programs that we have in particular, we have our center, which is our free thrift store, and we've been open during the whole pandemic. We, um, now have moved to have, we were doing appointments to shop. You had to have an appointment to have shop, and now we have a hybrid where we do have drop-in days and we do have appointments that you can have. We've found that some people prefer the appointments and others prefer the drop-in appointments. And we also keep a phone outside of our front door so people can, um, can, contact us if they need to, if they don't have a phone, uh, which, as you might imagine, happens quite a bit. Um, but I really wanted to talk a lot about what's been known in the past as our F I S Emergency Financial Services Program. It's really, it's really us, F I S is us, right? So, uh, that's where we help people who ask for help with rent or utilities or could be I D or something like that. Um, and I know there are a lot of other agencies who do that kind of work. We, um, are part of something, we called ourselves the Benton County Financial Resource Network, and that's a, a group of people that are a group of organizations that's us. We care Saint Vincent de Paul and Saint Mary's, and we meet regularly, maybe quarterly, and then we talk every week, because when there's an ask that more than any one of us can, uh, do, can cover on our own, then we all work together to make sure that it gets covered. And at the moment, like I would say at the beginning of the year, we were doing a lot of, we were actually doing a lot of rent assistance until the Oregon funds came through. Um, and then that had slowed down, but our utilities, our help with utilities, that's just kind of off the charts at the moment. Um, yeah, and we, we've doubled what we normally spend on this program. Not, not only per year, but per household. Um, and then, you know, we have our other programs that we do. We have our, um, we have our, we have community closets. I say, I will say that that's new to us, since, uh, you know, we don't have a whole lot of space inside of our building. We've started creating closets outside, uh, like we have one at the Monroe School District. We have one at the Alisi School District. We have one at Milestones Recovery, um, for people who can't make it to the center for whatever reason. And a lot of this is, uh, kind of, I don't want to say a Band-Aid, but it's kind of a way to get us to the next step in about three or four years to really, in earnest, start fundraising for a new space. And we're also in the middle of surveying to figure out what that might look like and where it should look like and where it should be. Because if we do move outside of our neighborhood, that's a huge impact on the people we serve. Because we, I don't, I have to say, since we're new to collecting data, I don't know exactly the percentage of people who are unhoused who access our services. But I would say, for the most part, we serve a lot of people who are kind of in that, that in-between space, right? Who maybe are staying with family members or who are living in a car or, which of course is being unhoused. But we are not, it's the same way with this Daytime Drop-In Center or, yeah, or Corvallis Housing First, although we do work with them a lot. And you probably also know, we have an outdoor pantry and an outdoor, like a food pantry and an outdoor hygiene pantry. Those are outside of our building. Those are for people who can't make it inside of the center or it's after hours and we're not open. We want to be able to have things available to them. And like, and we also have a holiday program right around the holidays where we provide food, like Lynn Benton Food Share does food around Thanksgiving, and we do food for Benton County around Christmas or in December. But I really wanted to back up a little bit and talk about our volunteer program, and then I'll stop and let you guys ask me questions. But when we talk a little bit about what it looks like for us to help people kind of build some skills and a little confidence about moving on, right? I just want to tell a story about a volunteer. She, we have a lot of volunteers who spend time in our center who are either low-income or low-wage earners or no-wage earners, but yet they still come to our center to spend time to volunteer. Some of them are looking for work, but maybe they haven't worked in a while, or they haven't had a lot of success recently, and they don't have a lot of references. So we had a volunteer who basically ran our donation center for a few months, and she was living in her car. And she, we helped her, basically, we ended up being a reference for her job that she got recently, and she was also promoted. And we've kind of been a support system for her, like an emotional support system, if you will. And she just came into my office a couple of weeks ago, and she sat down to tell me, you know, she'd been promoted into this new position or had her job, and that for the first time in a few years, she was going to be off of public assistance completely, and that she was scared, like she was afraid. But she came in to talk to us because she just wanted to say, to tell us that that's where she was at, and that she was excited and afraid all at the same time. But I think that's where I see our role moving forward. Like, I don't see us as necessarily part of a resource center for, like a, like as part of a hub. I see us supporting a hub like that, you know, for people who are unhoused. Because we work at the Daytime Drop-In Center, we see Alita and Allison all the time, right? But we're, we, I think, would be kind of that next step for people who are maybe a little, who kind of like still need that support, but maybe not the crisis intervention in the same way or that they deal with. I don't know how to kind of explain that quite correctly. We do work together with them, and yet we're a little bit different in the same sense. Like, I know it was a big deal that we had to make, that people had to make appointments to come into our center. Yeah, but we, when I look at all of the recommendations of the HOPE Advisory Board, like, we're really excited to support all those things because we do go to the service provider meetings. And in addition to, you know, I would say our emergency financial services program, we, weekly, we are on the phone with somebody from Jackson Street Youth Services, Corvallis Housing First, Daytime Drop-In Center, Samaritan, at the hospital, like, one of the health navigators. We've always got somebody calling us for something. And I know that we're way over time, so I'm just going to stop while you guys are asking me any questions that you might have.
I do have one quick question. You said you were just starting to collect some data on your clientele. And can you tell us what you're collecting and what you're trying to learn?
Well, we're trying to figure out, we're even just doing simple things like gender, you know, ethnicity, race, age, like anything, right? Household composition, whether or not, you know, how close you live to, to us, right? We do, we did collect people's addresses before, but, you know, we don't, just maybe some of the things that other people have talked about, whether or not this is the first time they've ever come to see us, whether or not there is interpersonal violence in their household, all sorts of things. And a lot of that comes out in the stories that people tell us when we're working with them. But we will ask as well. But people, but you're not required to give us that information to get help from us.
Thank you.
Yeah, Irene, I really appreciate the presentation and helping me get a better idea of how you fit in with the other service providers. And really glad to hear about partnerships. And that's kind of a theme of mine is, it almost doesn't matter what organization it is, you can't do everything. And, or you can't do everything well. And to, it sounds like you're trying to maybe change your niche a little bit, but appreciate hearing about your partnerships. I think that, letting that student to be encouraged.
Thanks. And I would say, when we do move into a new building, we really want to co-locate. You know, we want to have other places that are a good fit for us. And then I'm also going to, I'll say it on the record, I would love to have a micro shelter or two on-site next to the center. I think that would be amazing. So, yeah.
Well, I was involved, speaking of co-locating, I was involved with the Benton Soil and Water Conservation District and Green Belt and several other organizations as the building, the Confluence Building there on Second Street is taking place, getting closer. And I think that's a good model, because it's not, it's not easy. It's, but at least having the goal and then seeing who potential partners are. And I know in that particular project, the partners shuffle around a little bit as far as who's one of the major partners and who is in a supporting role. But I think that's, that's a great model and get the sum is greater than the parts, I think is, is the theory. And looking forward to that coming together and looking forward to hearing more about your, your group finding like-minded people to go together on a facility.
Thanks. And then randomly, I just want to give a quick plug to the school health navigators. They're amazing. You should keep them forever.
Thank you.
I'll send my presentation so you can actually look at it since I'm not technically capable of wanting.
That would be great. Question for you, Alfredina, and then I see that Nancy has her hand up as well. Do each of your organizations also have Spanish-speaking staff?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we actually hired what we call a Spanish-language navigator. So when you call the main number at CFC now, you'll get a, either you get the live receptionist who answers who can pass you on, but if you get our automated system, it says if you'd like to speak to someone who speaks Spanish, you know, press this number. And she basically, she goes far beyond just typical receptionist. She's really tapped with making sure that not only they understand what CFC has to offer, but she connects them directly and checks back in with them later to make sure they actually got the services they need. So it's, it's a more enhanced sort of thing, and would love to hire more.
Yeah, we're only, we're a little under three FTE, but one of us is bilingual, bicultural.
Thank you. I know, I know we're running behind, but I just want to say a couple things. Number one, Irene, thank you for coming today, and thank you for all the amazing work you do for Vina Moses. Everyone who knows you knows that you're an amazing person. And I'm really happy to hear that you guys are collecting data, because if it's worth doing, it's worth measuring. And then the question for you, could you speak to your capacity versus demand and what your bottlenecks might be?
So, boy, right, like, we're small, right? So we don't have the deep pockets like all these other organizations do. And so part of it is, there are, we get a lot of calls, people looking for shelter. Because we, we don't do, back up, like, we don't do case management, but a lot of people who call us, they don't know resources or what their options are or anything like that. So that's sort of, that's really where we are able to help people. And I don't even have a shelter to send them a lot of the time because they're full, right? Or I don't have housing that I can even, you know, maybe help with a deposit, even though we would send them to CFC first. But anyway, there's just not a lot of availability. And part of it for us too is that since we don't do case management, we don't necessarily know what happens with people after they walk out of our door. And I say that with a grain of salt, because a lot of people who come into our center to shop, we see them a lot, we become their support system moving forward. And we, we do know where we're sending people, right? Like, we know, we're putting them in the hands of people that we trust, I guess, that we work with and trust. But, yeah, there's just not a lot of availability out there, and we don't have deep enough pockets. But I do like that we have respectability in a way that other organizations don't have, right? And that we, we answer our, and it's not that other people don't answer their door and don't answer their phone, it's just that, using the Benton County Financial Resource Network as an example, we're the only place that's open five days a week and answers our phone eight hours, mostly eight hours a day.
How are you funded, Irene?
Mostly, well, grants, but mostly community donations. And I honestly, we took, we used to take a little bit of special money. It's not worth the effort for as little as we get, for all the work you have to do, it's not worth it. And I will say, we're also, right, we're mostly volunteer-run, so without people. And that's, I think that's a huge resource, I can't, resource, I can't say, you know, all the money just comes from this one thing. Like, that donation room doesn't operate without volunteers, and that's where all of the things that we put out, as you know, into our center come through that, that room. And all those donations come through that room.
I hear you struggle a little bit with being a dumping ground.
Yeah. We, we're working on it.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions for Irene, or I believe Dina's still with us before we move on? Dina, I have one last question for you, that can get you back. When you mentioned the coordinated entry list, and the number that is being discussed right now in the context of the HOPE Advisory Board planning, about 140 people on the list, are they referring to the coordinated entry list?
I don't know.
Okay. That's something we'll need to follow up on.
I really don't know, frankly. We, I'll just say, we are trying to make major improvements to how that system operates locally. I just was able to hire a person who's going to be the administrator for that data, and he's just starting to get to work, but I keep having to pull him off to go help people get their rent paid, because that's where it came from, was our Oregon Emergency Housing Program. So, but there's hundreds of, there's basically thousands of people on the coordinated entry list that includes all three counties. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how many there is in Benton, but it's hundreds. I don't think it's just 100.
Okay, okay. So the 140, I think it's a waiting list for Unity Shelter. And I just wasn't sure about the overlap there and whether those people are also on the coordinated entry list or how we're
Basically, they are.
Doing that right now. Okay, good question. I'd love to get.
We don't run waiting lists for our programs because basically they would get out of hand. So we serve people as we can when we have fun. When we, if we get into a situation where we've run out of fun, we just tell people to check back and we start again. Because if you run a long waiting list, you will spend months trying to go back to the waiting list when you get done.
Challenging.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you all. This has been a really interesting educational series on this topic of homelessness, of housing vulnerability, and community-based organizations that are providing support. And I'm hoping that will help us to make better decisions as we move forward with the support of the HOPE Advisory Board and all of you to continue to support the most vulnerable in our communities. So much appreciated. Okay, thank you, Dina. Thank you, Irene. And I believe Michelle's already gone.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kate Portia from our Department of Economic Development Office with her quarterly report.
Good morning, Michelle. Can you hear me okay? Awesome, thank you. I will be brief. I know you had a jam-packed agenda, and I know you've got Nick teed up with other important items. But we wanted to just take this opportunity to come in front of you and present the annual report that our team put together, and that was in your packet. First of all, a big thanks to Catherine Duval of our team who put the report together for you all. I think the meat of it starts down really under the year-end review and summarizes the work that our office helped with in the 2021 fiscal year. I don't, I don't want to go through all these because you guys have this information, but maybe just highlight a couple of these for you all and for folks who might be watching. As you all know, it's still, you know, through the 2021 year, almost all of our work was around the pandemic response and recovery work, which is still continuing to this day. But really a focus on getting funding and information out to our businesses in Benton County in a timely manner, setting up programs that were equitable in nature, you know, using a lottery system rather than a first-come, first-served system. And so our businesses in Benton County could have equal shots at the funding and programs that we had available. You know, we did a variety of different items. I love it. Catherine quantified a little bit later down. You see the number about the number of masks that we got out to businesses, 80,000, which, you know, I know you've got your other public health folks doing work in the same way and the vaccinations, but just proof positive that I think it was a team effort all the way around. And we were just really privileged and honored to, to serve you guys in this role and help, help the businesses in Benton County through this really challenging time. Couple items I wanted to point out for you too. When we quantify the business touches, these are businesses, this isn't like newsletters, these are businesses we talked to on the phone, went out and visited, had interactions with and helped. 956, of course, is way north of our usual, and I think that is because of the pandemic. But I did want to highlight that 265 of those were in the rural parts of Benton County, which is about 27%, and aligns with the percentage of funding that you all provide. And I know, I know there's sensitivities around that, but we really like to measure that to make sure our rural businesses are getting the touches that they deserve. And so it's not just a Corvallis-centric focus. We're pretty excited about a couple of upcoming grants that have come through. We submitted to the Oregon Capcades West for a business portal that we're going to be developing. Heather's taking the lead on that. We're going to call it the Benton County Business Portal, to really make it easier for folks who are wanting to start their business or expand their business to have a step-by-step guide. It's actually patterned after the San Francisco Business Portal, which, based on just the size of their city, is certainly aspirational, but it's a really helpful tool. And we think we can replicate something like that and make that easier. So we got some grant funds to make that happen. So that's exciting. And then we also were able to submit and help And then we also were able to submit and help get some funding for our friends in Monroe to do an economic development plan. And so, we've met with our city manager and Mayor Dan Sheets in some early conversations. We will not be leading that process, but I think it's more that we'll be at the table, helping them interface and understand what the goals are at the county level and some of those that may want to trickle down to Monroe and, you know, helping them in any way they need on, on kind of making that plan down in Monroe. I think I really, um, oh, I know she has some information in there, too, on our e-bikes program, which is exciting. And I think what I'd like to do is reserve the right. We work with Pacific Power on that, and I know, knowing your county administrator's interest in this topic, I might want to see if we can get a little more time with you on a separate meeting. Pacific Power actually did a video, not just about the e-bikes, but about all their different recipients of their, these kind of electrification grants. It's short and very sweet, and I think you guys would enjoy seeing it. So, maybe we'll get on a feature agenda for that item. Um, we.
Kate?
Yes, please.
Kate, uh, your presentation just was emailed. It, it was not in the packet. So, uh, it just came in a minute ago.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I, I apologize. I thought it had gone in the packet for you guys. Okay. Well, do, do take a look through. And again, the, the area that I'm looking at is in the annual report and the year in review items. And of course, going forward, we'd be happy to answer any questions. I think what I did want to let you know is I am collating the last of the reports from the partner organizations who received pass-through funding. I received Oregon Rain, uh, and I'm working with the SBDC to finalize theirs and the Foundry. And so, when I receive those, I will email those on to you all so you can review them. We have our Economic Development Coalition, the renamed from the EDAB that has started up again, where they had their first meeting this month and will be meeting again next month. And really, the biggies that our office and that group are working on, in addition to, to all the other work, but kind of the big, big project that we have right now on our radar include the Food Hub. Uh, we've continued to meet with food partners around the county and are ready to kind of solidify a work group and get folks to the table to begin really rolling up their sleeves and, and, and looking into that work. I will say, we do not yet have the ARPA funding. As you may recall, this is in huge thanks to Senator Gelsner Bluden, who got us this $550,000. We do not yet have that money. Those funds are still up at DAS with the state. Uh, when it comes through, though, I think we'll align that then with the first meeting of the Food Hub to get that going. Another big project is the annexation of the airport and Airport Industrial Park. And Jerry Sorty and Heather Stevens are working on that and really beginning to look into what's going to be needed and the steps that we're going to take to move that forward. That's a big lift because it may involve some code changes that obviously will involve an annexation. So, so not a small lift, but one that we still believe is important and that the partners that we've all spoken to, both on the city side, you all, our businesses down there, think it would be a very helpful course of action. So, working on that. And then the gap analysis. Um, now that EDC is meeting, we're going to put together a work group. As you may recall, this is the project to, um, oh, excuse me, to analyze, analyze kind of our, the Benton County business ecosystem and really understand where the gaps are existing for our businesses and then how we work to fill those. And what I'm really hoping is that this analysis becomes a jumping-off point for policymaking for you all in how we think about funding, um, you know, using the economic development funds and where we're really going to invest those to get the most bang for the buck. I will share, I did just speak with a colleague in Springfield. She did an analysis like this in the past and found it very, very helpful. And they were really able to identify, um, specific industries that they were wanting to continue to target and specific issues where they were really having market leakage. And some of those, um, you know, were new information for their office. So, I think, I think it'll be very helpful. And as always, we're continuing to watch the EDA and other grant applications that are coming open and making sure that we're, we're getting the applications in those as appropriate because we are all for leveraging funding and, and, you know, using these federal dollars and other dollars that are available to, to benefit our county in this area. So, that's really the gist of the update that I was hoping to give. But I, I'd love to pause and answer any questions that you all might have on this time, too. Thanks.
Kate, I think you're calling it the Business Right-Away Program. That's the, um, businesses able to take over parking spaces.
Yes.
Uh, what's, what's the schedule on that? I remember something about that, that's going to, it's seasonal and the end of October and then prospects for next year.
Yes. Thank you so much for asking about that, Commissioner Malone. And we had originally thought that we would be approaching the Corvallis City Council this month about making this a permanent program. We're not quite ready to do that. As you may know, our Public Works Department is in the middle of a parking study. And they felt like, and I completely agree, that it was really important that we finish out that work in order then to make some determinations about the permanency of this program. But also, you know, some specifics about what are we going to charge for this space, right? And, and the information coming out of this parking study is really going to help inform that. So, to answer your question, the great news is where we're at. We went before city council and they have agreed to extend the pilot program for another year, as is, because we're still in the midst of COVID. So, in fact, businesses are going to be able to use the Business Right-Away Program through the winter months. We're going to keep it rolling because the pandemic is still in place. We do have some rules we're going to be watching over this. Folks can't build permanent-type structures. They need to be using the space at least weekly. We can't just have them holding spaces that they're not using for long periods of time because otherwise, we'd rather have that be parking. So, we're going to keep a close eye on that, but we are allowing folks to continue with it through the winter months. And then next summer, we'll bring back to city council then that consideration of making the program permanent, at which point our intention and what we've sort of previewed with city council is that it would be seasonal, to your point, Commissioner Malone. I think we're leaning toward an April-to-October permanent program once we're clear of the pandemic, uh, that, that folks, businesses could use this in the, the fairer weather months in our region.
Very good. Thank you. I, I think that, that was an inspired idea, I think, that went around the country. And I'm glad that, uh, we, we took advantage of that. That's just, uh, I think really helped our local taverns and restaurants and, uh, to get through some really tough times.
Totally agreed. And I, I, you know, I, I don't say it enough, but props to our partners. This was, you know, this was a, a multi-departmental lift with the fire department and public works and us and community development, and everybody came together. We were one of the first cities in Oregon to, to just get this going. And I'm just really, I'm really proud of us to, to have done it. And I'm excited about the prospect of, of keeping it going because people seem to have responded very well to it and businesses as well.
Excellent. Um, and, um, I know that you also house the Sustainability Program for Corvallis in the Economic Development Office. So, I can see, just by briefly glancing at the annual report, that you have linked those two and you explicitly stated that the, um, the sustainability values are part of your work. So, I'm curious to see how that partnership unfolds and emerges over time.
Yeah. And I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner Ojero. I think, you know, that's upfront. We realized, it was really interesting when we were putting together this annual report and next year's plan, we, we had, on every item, we're like, oh, we want to do that through a lens of our, you know, DEI, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, but also through a lens of the environment. We were writing that down in everyone and we realized, we, we use these lenses in all of our work. So, like, I appreciate you bringing that up. And I will say, too, um, we've continued to work with Sean McGuire from your team as he's looking at this notion of the bigger economic resiliency and taking a close look at, um, the projects in our plan that align with that, which I'm really pleased to report, there's already a number of things that were in our plan that are already in that space. But then having an awareness about how we, um, include that environmental lens going forward. And I, I do think, for example, in Benton County, a lot of folks may not know, but in our Enterprise Zone Program, we have a higher level of stringency that says you need to incorporate these sustainable values into your business or you need to be a food and beverage business or a natural product. I mean, we, there are ways through our policies that we can ensure that we are incenting the types of, of businesses that are community valued. So, thanks for bringing that up.
That's cool. Thank you. I appreciate the collaboration going on, um, at multiple levels between Corvallis and the county.
Nancy. Hi, Kate. Thank you for coming today. Thank you for the update. No questions, really. I just wanted to, um, highlight a couple of things that I really appreciate. Uh, number one is the focus on the rural businesses. That has been sort of a, an issue, I would say, people have felt like in the past, but that has been overlooked. So, I really appreciate that you guys are bringing a focus to that. That's great work. And as a former city councillor, I am very excited to hear about the airport annexation project. And, uh, I'm looking forward to following that. And then I just wanted to say, when it comes to your DEI stuff, I see that you added the word belonging, uh, which I think is really great. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any further questions for Kate? Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate the update.
Thank you all. And I'll work with Teresa to get, to get back on. We'll bring back the e-bike video so you guys can see that and enjoy it briefly. I think you'll like it a lot. So, thank you so much for the time and we'll look forward to talking again in the future.
Thank you. Okay. I propose that we take a five-minute break at this point before we, um, head into our next item. Let's come be back here in our seats at 10:45 to, um, take a break next time. Thank you. Okay. Uh, I, um, will move us on then to the next agenda item, which is item 4.3. And, um, we have Alyssa Rash and Nick Kurth presenting. So, I believe, Alyssa, you're beginning.
Thank you, Commissioner Ojero. Good morning, commissioners and everyone else joining us. For those that don't know me, my name is Alyssa Rash. I use the pronouns she, her, and hers, and I am the Benton County Public Information Officer, largely overseeing community engagement on the Justice System Improvement Program with Nick. So, last week, when we joined you, um, we were reviewing our public engagement efforts up through September 17th for the Justice System Improvement Program, which I will now refer to as JSIP. 17th for the Justice System Improvement Program, which I will now refer to as JSIP. Since that time, we have had a few additional speaking engagements with key stakeholders that we would like to preview of. We did have the September 20th League of Women Voters Meeting, Women Voters Meeting, and the September 21st NAACP Meetings. And I believe that we were able to have Commissioner Malone join us for the League of Women Voters, and Commissioner Weiss join us for the NAACP Meeting. So please feel free to share any thoughts you have as well, commissioners. Both of those meetings were very well-attended, and the key themes that we took away were around equity and access in the Justice System Improvement Program. So the League of Women Voters were very supportive of the prevention efforts that the county is undertaking. And one participant specifically advocated for the support and safety of people with disabilities in the community. Regarding the NAACP Meeting, participants recommended that the county direct funds to education and treatment, specifically to support the reentry of incarcerated adults back into society. And they also recommended that the county tracks the incarceration of people by race and ethnicity. So with that, Nick, I will hand it over if you have any additional thoughts you'd like to share on public engagement last week.
Not pretending to last week, but I did just want to share with the commissioners as a reminder. Originally, we had intended to come to this meeting with final public engagement findings. On further reflection, that really didn't make sense because our public engagement process is going to continue through 10/13. So Communications Team and Ops Team discussed it and said, let's come back after the 13th with final public engagement findings. And that makes perfect sense. So just wanted to make that clarification for you relative to what we had originally scheduled for today.
That makes sense. And I see that Sheriff Van Arsdale and Johan have also come on screen. And either of you have comments from those events, please share them now as well. Sheriff.
What I would say is always, I thought Nick did an amazing job with regards to those meetings. Plus, there was an additional, I'm trying to remember, we did one more, maybe downtown Corvallis, I think it was. I just appreciate all the feedback we've been receiving. And I just want to make sure that we're processing that feedback and put together a complete and total package at the conclusion of this. I appreciate Alyssa and her role as the mediator. I think she's doing a great job as well. So as we plow ahead, I like the group we have together. And I just want to make sure we put a complete and total package in front of voters. And I think the due diligence we're demonstrating to the community hopefully is building their trust and support in the system as well.
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to echo something I stated in the meeting last week, the NAACP Meeting, that I am offering for anyone who is part of this process, they would like a copy of The Medium Crow, an excellent book that I think could be crucial as a prerequisite to doing this work. So if anyone would like a copy of that, my office will pay for that. So I think it'd be an excellent opportunity to read that book. It's really impactful. At some point, it'll be a book club book, but we're not ready for that as far as the countywide yet. But I think it's a really crucial tool. Additionally, I just have some advice for us as we, before we're working with groups, is there was one segment where a few different violent crimes were named directly back-to-back. And I don't think that's a very trauma-informed approach to things. So I recommend that we really be careful as we're naming violent crimes and things, and be mindful of the impact it could have on the community members who are hearing about those statistics and things as well. Thank you.
Johan, would you be willing to just expand on that a little bit relative to your recommendation? That caught my attention, and I have to say, I'm not sure I exactly understand. Why are you recommending what you are?
The book or the violent crime piece?
Violent crime piece. I love the book.
So that was, I believe it was the DA, he started to reference after one of the questions, one of our community members or from the NAACP asked the question around, something around the specific rates of crimes. And then he emphasized some of the different crime rates, because he was saying it was property damage based. And then he started to name some of the different violent crimes that happened. But wasn't super specific, but was specific enough that could be pretty triggering for people. I think especially considering the space that we were in of marginalized populations, was just be more careful of how we deliver that information. I think in general, it'd be really good for us to practice.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Other questions for Alyssa or myself on public engagement? Otherwise, I'll transition to the next piece of today's meeting.
I do have one quick question. Could you just refresh my memory as to what the focus of the next public, big public outreach meeting is going to be, like the questions we're going to be asking?
I'd have to say we're aligning on that, Commissioner Weiss. Now, that's active for discussion and as part of today's operations team meeting. You know, I think we're looking at a little bit what comes out of today's discussion. We had originally intended to go to the large October, large meeting number two, on October 13th, with at least a draft recommendation on site. I think we're tiptoeing towards that to kind of see how these, your conversations evolve. We also wanted to use the 10/13 meeting to, you know, really share what we've heard, what we think we've heard, and hit the high notes. So we are working on that, actively working on that messaging.
I'll share also that we do plan to use polling in the Zoom webinar again. But the Ops Team has not, at this point, settled on which questions we will ask. The goal of our questions is certainly going to be to help inform you, the commissioners, in your decision-making. So as we work towards those questions, and we kind of finalize what October 13th will look like, we will of course be informed along the way to make sure that we're gathering the information that is going to be helpful to you.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the fact that we're getting more traction in the community with specific community groups, particularly in the Black Indigenous and People of Color community. It takes time, and it's a challenging issue for many people in those communities. And so I'm just grateful that those relationships are starting to take shape, and also that we can circle back in February when we pick up a community engagement again and deepen those conversations.
Okay. With that, I'll move to the next item on our agenda this morning. So today is the first of pre-scheduled discussions to align on a suburban site for the Justice System Improvement Program. And again, I want to emphasize it's on, the emphasis around the suburban site selection. And I provided you some information in advance, I think it was late Friday. I'm going to put that up on the screen now. We don't have to go through it line by line, but I will hit some of the high points of the refresher and then invite questions. In addition, I did send you an additional PDF this morning. I apologize, I didn't think about it earlier, but it dates back a year. It was kind of our original shortlist and ranking of our five suburban sites. And part of that is captured in what I'm going to share with you just now, but it also has a little bit more detail. I don't think, if you haven't looked at it, it's not going to detract from today's discussion, but more information for you to ponder as we move forward. So again, not looking for a, didn't come here looking for a decision today. Three opportunities, we actually have a fourth if we need it. But did want to begin our discussion and make sure we have as many questions answered as we can. So with that, if I can share my screen? And I don't know who's giving me screen sharing, but I need that.
Nick, you should already have that available.
Oh, I do? Okay. Let's see. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Sorry, my apologies. Okay. Can you read this? So I added, I added a line to the top, and this really reflects the preliminary ranking that we did a year ago. This was a spreadsheet of some 32 factors that we rated the sites against. And at that time, the South Site had a plus 2.2, which is a positive. The West Site had a minus 4.6. And in that PDF I sent this morning, you can kind of see how that score occurred, or scoring occurred. I will note, I do want to note that the South Site at that time contemplated was just the 15 acres at the top of the 65. So it wasn't relative to the entire 65 acres. And it was not, it did not include what we now know about development costs. So, but I just wanted you to see those scores and be able to, in your leisure, compare them with how some of the other sites ranked. So, just hitting some of the high notes, you know, South Site is 65 acres, West Site is about 35. You can see that wetlands are pretty different. South is mostly wetlands, West is about 50/50. The West Wetlands are all concentrated in the area of development, which means very little mitigation is needed, if any. Same is not true on the South Site. Effectively, all of the 15 acres that are contemplated for development, we need a mitigation. Acquisition costs, not terribly different. And development costs for the JSIP Site only are significantly different. That shouldn't be new information. I do want to point out what I consider an error, and something I just thought of this morning, which is cost per acre, including JSIP development costs. This is kind of misrepresented because the denominator I used was the total area of the site. So 65 acres for the South Site and 37 for the West Site. You know, if you use actually the actual JSIP develop area, which is about, you know, 15, 16 acres, the numbers, the numbers change dramatically. On the South Site, they ballooned to about $375,000 to $700,000 per acre for the 15 acres that you're actually developing. And on the West Site, a much lower, 120 to 135,000 per acre. So I just want to, I want to make that clarification that I don't think this range is correct because I used a much bigger denominator than is actually applicable. The long-term holding and maintenance is really minimal for both sites. South, we could continue to farm the remaining 50 acres as grassland presumably. And West Site might need a, might need a haircut a couple of times a year on the portion along 53rd Street that's flat and grass, but it wouldn't have, not a lot of long-term considerations. We've talked about annexation, it's probable for the South Site, not applicable to the West Site. Utilities are on site on West, they are not on the South. Soil concern seemed pretty minimal. We've actually done soil study on the, on the South Site, didn't uncover anything with the borings that we did. And West is not likely. It's, soil is very consistent across the area. And we have the recent Lincoln School development that ELR was part of, same soil type, no surprises. So by extrapolation, probably not, not fully expect to find anything on the South Site. Neither is in the floodplain, but South could get, could be cut off. We've talked about that at the Marys River, the kind of junction at the northern end of South Town. Both sites have room for JSIP expansion. And what I mean by that is whether we'd ever add on to the correctional facility, there's room to do that. That's part of the planned conceptual design. Expansion beyond that, how in the West Site is minimal. There may be room for fairgrounds parking on the flat section bordering 53rd. But aside from that, probably not much. Of course, South Site does have significant room for expansion, whether for the county or, you know, where we just sell off parcels. Both sites are under an LLI, so presumably the owners are willing to sell. Zoning, zoning is good on both sites. There is zone change required, or at least the director's interpretation on both sites, but generally compatible. As I've noted, there's general industrial, mixed-use employment, and light industrial office on the South Site, intensive industrial on the, on the West Site. Certainly, we've heard concerns, not surprisingly, from the neighborhoods in proximity to the sites. Travel time to downtown roughly equal in terms of sheriff's response. I'm leveraging something that Sheriff Van Arsdale had said in another meeting, and invite him to speak up here. But response to the entire county, maybe a little bit better from West. Sheriff, do you want to share your thoughts on that? I don't want to.
Nothing gets by you, Nick. No, I just, that West Side, obviously, it's easier to get around to the backside of Paloma there, on West Hills and North 19th, and then head west. And then from that location, if we need to get into downtown Corvallis, you have multiple avenues to do that. And then similarly, to go north or south, you just simply pull out on the 53rd and the left or right. So there is a little bit better response, but it, you know, South Town, if I live in Monroe, I'm pretty happy with the South Corvallis location. So it's kind of a toss-up, but that West Side does provide a little bit better response to service through the north and the, and the west side of the county.
Thank you, Sheriff. In terms of service to the public, neither site is immediately adjacent to public transportation, although both are within proximity, about the same distance, quarter, quarter to maybe a half a mile, more like a half a mile, exist to existing transportation routes. And I've shared with you and with the public that in conversation with Corvallis Transit Service, seems like we can work out some solution for providing public transportation to, all the way to either site in the four or five years that we have had to work with. The West Site is adjacent to a multimillion path, so a perk there. And in terms of parking, both have ample room for parking. Finally, gateway site, the South Site is considered a gateway site into Corvallis. Corvallis. Uh, City of Corvallis, in the discussions we've had, have seemed, uh, supportive and even enthusiastic about the county kinda becoming the anchor tenant on that site and, and spurring, spurring its development. Uh, West Site is not, not considered as much of a, a gateway site into Corvallis, so that's, that's all I had to share with you, um, from this. Whether, I, I can, I can keep this up, or we can just go to full screen, and I can field questions, and we can part, start discussion.
I suspect that we've ha- have it, um, uh, on our own computers as well, and so perhaps we could minimize it for now. Um, Pat, go ahead.
Uh, I guess it, it, at some point, and it doesn't have to be now, Nick, uh, a little more detail on, uh, development, uh, costs between the sites, um, and, and wherever that would, um, fit in, uh, you've, um, 'cause the, the numbers are, um, large, and, um, um, like, oh, five million, uh, on the South Site, uh, five million dollar difference between, uh, the low and the high estimate. But, uh, u- u- up to you when, when you wanna get into that, uh, discussion.
Well, and, and it's up to, to all of you as well, so I would, I would definitely reference the, um, the document I sent a couple of weeks ago, uh, that went into a lot of detail of the South development costs and, and compared them, uh, with the West. Um, what I will say about that five million dollar spread is it's, it's essentially the cost of, uh, TSP proposed ODOT large roundabout on, uh, Oregon ninety-nine at Kiger, uh, so that's, that's already been, that is part of the P S- TSP. Um, whether ODOT would require us to do that as part of our development, you, you know, really won't be known until we, until we get into development. Um, um, but there's the potential for it, um, there's the potential that, based on the Transportation Systems Study, they'll say, uh, it's not required at this time, um, but at some point, it, it certainly could be.
And it's completely out of our, you know, control, is that correct?
It is, yeah, it is, and in fact, um, you know, I shared the results of the TSP with ODOT, tried to get them their way in, um, they're really not willing their way in, make any kinda determination until, um, you know, we're actually proposing development, unfortunately, that's, that process is true for both ODOT and the city, there just isn't the process to engage in a hypothetical discussion on development until they're actually filing for development.
And that would happen in, in a few years, um, so it's challenging, um, there are, there will be uncertainty as we move forward, and there's also, um, an ongoing ninety-nine, um, West corridor study, um, and that's, I think, um, been out in draft form, but that will also clarify a little bit further what ODOT's, and the City of Corvallis's expectations are, um, in that part of South Corvallis. Um, and I, I think that we need to be clear that, uh, the Transportation Systems Plan for, uh, West Fifty-third, between, um, the County Transportation Systems Plan and the City Transportation Systems Plan, also envisions upgrades and updates, and, although we are not developing on that Fifty-third Street frontage, uh, it may well be that we, um, would engage in updates to that Fifty-third Street corridor, so the costs may not be quite so, um, apples and oranges. Um, and I don't know, Joe or Nick, whether you wanna speak to that.
All right, well, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, I'll, I'll be happy to, uh, share a few thoughts on that, and then I ask Nick to, uh, color the picture even more, but, uh, before I do that, Commissioner, I think it's important that I, uh, just stated publicly that I am a resident of the Brand Oaks subdivision, and while I don't have a conflict of interest from a legal perspective, there could be the, uh, public perspective that I, uh, may have a conflict of interest just by virtue of, uh, living and owning a house at Brand Oaks. Uh, so with that being said, I have consulted, by the way, with, uh, our county attorney. Uh, with that being said, I do think that I can be, uh, fair and impartial and unbiased as I, uh, uh, work on this project. As you know, I've actively been engaged in this project since, uh, arriving here four years ago, and, uh, uh, as it relates to the decision pertaining to site selection, it's really the board's decision and, and, uh, not, uh, a deci- decision that I, uh, will be making, so, uh, with that being said, I would like to go ahead and, uh, answer your question. I, I think that, you know, the, the Fifty-third Corridor is really a, uh, a challenge for Benton County, and I think for the City of Corvallis overall, and, uh, as Nick can tell you, many of our conversations, uh, around JCP have focused on transportation, and I would say the Fifty-third Corridor is no exception. Uh, we, we have, in terms of Benton County, been working on a, uh, overpass, railroad overpass project, uh, there on Fifty-third, uh, real close to the Mary Annaxation, and, um, uh, as well as close to this proposed JCP site, and, uh, I do think that the, uh, transportation will need to continue to be a, uh, dialogue surrounding, uh, that particular corridor, and as Nick mentioned, we haven't received the results of the, uh, traffic impact analysis that's being done regarding the West Site. Uh, we'll have that the middle of October, uh, that will help us understand the impacts on the Fifty-third, uh, corridor, Fifty-third Street, uh, corridor, uh, and, uh, just acknowledging that the project that we've had on the books, uh, for probably six-plus years, if not eight, uh, that railroad overpass that I mentioned, uh, back in twenty-seventeen was the last public meeting we held, uh, with the neighbors out there in that area, uh, and at that time, that project was slated, uh, for, or projected at seven million dollars. Uh, it's likely increased in cost, uh, over the last, uh, four years, uh, and then, uh, another complicating factor is frankly, the Mary's Annexation piece, uh, and what ends up happening regarding, uh, Fifty-third, uh, street improvements, as well as West Hills improvements that the developer, uh, may be responsible for, so I think, uh, Benton County will have to be part of the solution out there on Fifty-third. Uh, I think the property owner for Mary's Annexation will, and as Nick has alluded to, you know, the state, that's, uh, Fulham Boulevard and Fifty-third, uh, is also a, uh, challenging intersection, so, uh, transportation, I think, has risen, uh, uh, for whether or not it's the West Site or the South Site, um, as a consideration the board needs to, uh, understand, and, uh, uh, we're doing the best show we can to get our hands around the information for you, uh, but ultimately, until the development, uh, comes out of the ground, we won't have really hard and firm costs.
I don't, don't have a whole lot more to add, other than, you know, both of the trans- well, either, either site has transportation concerns, um, and costs, uh, potential costs, neither of which are directly related to the justice system improvement program, so I just think it's important to keep that in mind, uh, the data that we have studying South Site at, uh, at full development, so, uh, correction facility, sheriff's office, and new courthouse, uh, did not even require a right turn lane, uh, from Oregon ninety-nine on the Kiger, or Kiger on the Oregon ninety-nine. Um, that tells me the impacts relative to the current traffic situation are, are minimal, and that was the conclusion of DKS. Um, similarly, I, I don't expect the transportation study that's conducting to, to show that the, the, um, development of the West Site is gonna significantly impact the current situation, but the current situation is, is not a good one on the Fifty-third Corridor, so just want everyone to understand that, um, whether it's the TSP-proposed developments on the South Site, um, or, uh, current, uh, challenges on, uh, West Site, um, either is directly related to JCP and both are, uh, relative, uh, relevant to, to JCP and, and the site selection.
I would add to Nick's comments that the good thing about the West Site is that we have, in terms of Benton County has more control over what any of those improvements would look like on Fifty-third or, uh, on Reservoir, which I think there's likely no requirements, uh, related to Reservoir, and I might be surprised come October fifteenth, but, uh, you know, we, we definitely have more control of our destiny, uh, as to what, uh, transportation improvements would occur, uh, and when they would need to occur, uh, which is, uh, potentially what's happening, or what could happen with the South Site, uh, is on future development, a lot of that being in the hands, as Nick indicated, of ODOT.
That is an advantage. Yes. Nancy?
Uh, so I have a question that's not really related to that, but, um, I think it's more for the sheriff's office. Um, I would like to hear a little bit about the process or the procedure, um, when adults in custody are released from jail, what that looks like, um, mainly because I've heard some, you know, community concern as of late.
Certainly, Commissioner. Um, currently, obviously, we, we just, they go out the back door, and they're, and they're downtown, and they're at the courthouse or across the street from Full Infligation, there's access to some resources not, not terribly far away. Uh, with either one of these sites, we, we don't know what that's gonna look like yet. Um, since it's in its infancy, and we are taking input from the community, we can kinda create it and make it whatever we want it to look like. It, it's not like we release, you know, twenty, thirty, forty people a day, it's, it's, it's limited at best, and so, um, you know, we have the core team, if somebody that needs to go to the resource center, and maybe that's the next step in this, is a soft handoff to the resource center from our facility, and, you know, that whether it's CTS, or BAT, or, or the sheriff's office, or the core team, you know, there's just so many options available to us right now to explore, as far as how we get, um, our AICs that we release, you know, if they don't have that support system in place, which ultimately is the hope, of course, is that we build a new facility and have access to resources and support, um, if they don't have that, we can certainly work as, as a community to figure out what that is, and maybe we, we, we facilitate that transport from South, uh, Corvallis, or the West Site, to the resource center, or, or to what, whatever facility, or, or family, or wherever that next step may be in their, in their journey. You know, we, we talk about, we don't want them going up to the Dalles, we don't want them going to, we want them in our community so that we can help them, and help them reintegrate and better prepare them to step back into, to the Benton County life. Kicking them out the door and saying, "Good luck," probably isn't the best transition there, so taking a look at that part of the system would, would be certainly a viable option, something that I'm willing to take a look at.
Thank you, Sheriff. Um, and I guess what I would like to see or hear is a commitment from Benton County that we will, uh, consider those and, um, I guess, address that concern, come up with a plan sometime in the future. Um, yeah, I guess, is that, is that something that Benton County as a whole, you know, we are gonna play a part, sheriff's office is gonna play a part, is that something that we can commit to at some point?
Well, again, I'll just speak for the sheriff's office, you know, I, I'm committed to the core, I understand, uh, the foundation is, is, you know, right now, County Middle Health and CPD, 'cause we don't know what it's gonna look like. Um, I'm committed to that, and I am committed to this, this total justice system improvement program book, and so if that's something that we decide is something that we need to do, and I, again, that's a little bit of holding our own feet to the fire and practicing what we preach, and, you know, we, we can't just kick them out the back door, we, there has to be that next transitional phase, that next step, something to help them at least, uh, get, get a, a boost in the right direction to, to going down the road of, of success. So yes, you, I, I give you that commitment from my office, that's for sure.
I'm just wondering how my other commissioners feel about that, too?
Absolutely, Nancy, it's, uh, it's fun.
Yeah, uh, I, I just wanted to say, this, uh, concern, uh, seems familiar, uh, uh, twenty fifteen, uh, last time we voted on it, uh, uh, there was considerable opposition in Paloma, uh, just, uh, e- exactly what Nancy asked, the, the picture that was, uh, painted was a, a lot of, uh, either people who, who had just been released, or, uh, their friends just hanging around in jail, uh, correctional facility, uh, proposed for Paloma, and I, I think, I think this is, uh, so, important point to, uh, get, uh, reality, what it, what it actually is currently, and what our, uh, hopes are, uh, with the new facility, what we would be able to do, but this is, uh, a recurring, uh, theme in, in some of the, uh, concerns, and I, I don't think they're, uh, being very realistic, or, or really have much of a notion what the current situation is, that, uh, the jail is in downtown Corvallis, the block and a half from the library, and, uh, I, uh, at least I, I'm not aware of significant, um, problems with, with this concern with the, with the current facility, so, uh, with a, a, a better, uh, facility, with more programs, we should be in even better shape, but I, I think, uh, we've got our work cut out for us to, um, uh, paint an accurate, uh, an accurate, uh, picture of, uh, how things would actually, uh, work and, and the, uh, actual impact of whatever neighborhood the facility is in.
I would, I would urge you to keep in mind as well, I don't know that anybody's talked to, uh, talked to, uh, any of the adults in custody since this study, but I, I think there's also gonna be that element of folks that don't want a ride anywhere, they just wanna be left alone, let me out of the facility, and I'm, I'm, I'm on the streets, thanks, I appreciate it, so that's, that's the reality as well, there's gonna be an element that doesn't, doesn't wanna ride anywhere, they're just gonna wanna get out of the facility.
I think it's a good reminder that we do need to, uh, continue to consult and talk to the adults in custody, um, and involve them in any of that, um, planning as we move forward for that post-release, but post-release planning, just like we're, we're talking about, um, pre-trial, we need to be thinking about the other end and the reintegration, and I know we do that really well for folks coming out of the state prisons, I'm not sure how much we do for folks coming out of our own correctional facility here, so we'll need to make sure that we articulate that as we move forward. Okay, other questions related to site? Um, are, are either of you feeling more or less comfortable with one site or another at this point? Do you have serious questions? What do we need to know in order to make this decision?
Well, I will just kinda start talking, um, so as Nick mentioned, obviously, we are not making a decision today, we still have more public outreach to hear, um, but I have been thinking about, you know, how I'm gonna go about making this decision, and, um, I made a list of my top considerations, um, in order of how important they are to me. Uh, number one, I would say, is community support, whichever location the community supports is gonna be really big for me. Um, number two is upfront costs. Number three, long-term expenses and operating costs. Number four, hurdles in the process, things like, um, annexations, which are lengthy, you know, the wetland mitigation, um, development requirements, transportation, all that stuff. Um, and then number five would be, uh, the accessibility, um, the ability to get to other locations, um, that was previously mentioned.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy. That's a great start. Pat, would you have any criteria to add to that? What are your top considerations?
Nothing to add. That's a nice list. I think cost is really important. We've been discussing the overall cost and now we have better information about actual and estimated costs for these two sites. And in order to move this forward, we have to have good community support. So that's definitely a consideration. Seems like we've heard from a number of concerns on both these sites and that as far as I can tell, it breaks down to, if I live close to one site, then I think it should go on the other location. And I guess we need to pin that down as far as just how serious those concerns are, can they be mitigated? Just going back to our previous discussion, Nick in his slide presentation has a slide of three facilities that are attractive and would be an asset to whatever neighborhood they're in. But we obviously have some work to do to get that message across. But I guess the good news is we have some time to do that. So I think that's what I have.
Sorry, having trouble getting unmuted. Thank you. That's good. The, I would have to say for me that the accessibility location and access to all points across the county is probably one of my number one concerns. This is a facility that's built for the long term, not for the short term. So that is always in the forefront of my mind. And the West Side is appealing from that perspective because it is more central and offers that access to the north part of the county and the west, as well as easy access to the south part of the county. The upfront costs are of significant concern to me, whatever it is that we need to include in bond measure. And constrain those costs to as great as possible. I think we need to have the best information possible before us in the next few weeks in order to make that decision. But with the understanding that some of those transportation-related costs are going to be unclear and will remain unclear until we get to the application phase for permitting. And so part of my question for you, Nick, is how does DLR factor those types of less predictable costs into their engineering design? Or do they, in order to have funds available to address those costs?
Yeah, I can answer that question. So those development costs that I've shared with you are not factored into the project costs that I've shared with you and publicly. So for instance, you know, the $50 million mark for the correctional facility, $35 million for the new courthouse net of post-CCNI funding. They do not include any of the transportation system costs that are shown on this analysis. What they do include are the, you know, the internal roads within the campus, so between parking areas, off of a collector's street, et cetera. So I think I made that point in the analysis I provided you that, you know, the potential five to 10 million on the South Side is in addition. You'd have to budget for that in the bond measure. It's not captured in the facility's costs. And that includes wetland mitigation as well. So, you know, five to 10 on the South, five to seven, 100,000 on the, 500,000 to 700,000 on the West Side.
Well, I would have to say, based on the information we have at present, that I lean towards that West Side because of the fact that the costs, development costs are much more reasonable. But, and the location, the two factors together. But I am, you know, perfectly ready to consider either site. I don't have a strong bias at this time. That is my leaning.
Commissioners, one thing that would be beneficial for staff to understand as you move forward with your deliberations are what specifically do you need staff to bring back to you over the course of your next one or two meetings that will help you get to a point where you can make the site selection decision? So that's question number one. And then question number two is, you know, what are you looking for from staff as relates to a recommendation and/or from our consultant? Are you looking for receptive to a recommendation from staff? Or do you feel that the processes we've gone through to narrow down the sites is sufficient for your needs at this point?
I was, I guess it's in the back of the DLR matrix, and I didn't realize it was that old, but from June of last year. Time flies, Nick. We've, unless there's a reason not to ask DLR to go over the sites with current information and acreage and some of the costs that we didn't know about a year and a half ago to kind of tidy up their matrix. I mean, there's, I think that would be useful. I mean, they're the people that have the expertise and do this on a regular basis. And so I guess I would like to circle back to those folks and have them freshen up the matrix that we have. I mean, we end up with a lot of notes and scratching out and just a cleaner evaluation form would, for me, would be helpful.
Mitch Hein is actually with us here today and I know he's listening in. And Mitch was really, was, you know, the instrumental person in creating that original matrix and populating it and updating it. And so Mitch, does that request feel like it's something that the DLR could do to kind of update the ranking and integrate some of the information that we've captured to date and come back with a recommendation?
Yeah, I think that'll help us gather, you know, get to the point of a recommendation. Factoring in some of the other things we've talked about is something we can look at between now and next week, for sure.
Good. Thank you.
It might also be helpful to look at those overpassed plans for 53rd Street and to speak to Laurel about, or to DLR, I don't know whether you all would know about what the cost inflation factor is if we were to put that out for bid today. I will follow up with Laurel on that.
And I was just going to say, updated financial cost estimates. I know there's a lot of moving parts and there's a lot up in the air, but Nick, you said something about your figures on the list being off. If you could send us the closer to what you think would be correct, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Cost per acre. I think that was just the cost per acre. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so the development cost numbers are 100% solid. So the nominal numbers are 100% solid. I just realized that cost per acre, I probably erred in using the full site acreage for the denominator, but I will update that and explain that. Provides more detail on what really the cost per acre is for the area that you're actually proposing to develop for JSEF.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then, Jay, what was the other question that you were hoping for us to answer?
The other question is, you know, specifically what the board is expecting from staff. Are you looking for a recommendation from our operations team? Are you looking for a recommendation from DLR? What would help the board at this point to deliberate?
Okay. Yeah, I'm honestly not sure how I feel about that. I'm still just kind of mulling it over. Maybe Zan, if you have any thoughts?
Well, we also have a technical advisory committee and a community advisory committee. And I know that they've discussed these sites and the merits and demerits of the sites over time. So I think the ops team is the right group to take all of that input from past meetings with the community advisory committee, the citizens advisory committee, and the technical advisory committee and DLR and to perhaps put that into some sort of a summary forum so that we know what all of those groups recommend. And they might not be in a board, but it would be very helpful to have that information. I also don't know that we have, you know, a leaning sense for the broad community perspective, Nancy. And if we were to make a preliminary recommendation in our October 13th meeting, we would get a much better reading on that. If we don't make a recommendation, we won't learn that.
Yeah, that, I underline that as well. Nancy, my concern there, I know that was at the top of your list, community support. And I wanted to ask you, you know, what your expectations were on gauging that because, you know, frankly, support for either of the sites is not one of the questions of the, was not one of the explicit questions with public engagement. What we're finding is exactly what Commissioner Malone summarized, is exactly what DLR said would happen, which is anybody in proximity isn't going to necessarily favor it and you won't know what anyone else thinks who's farther away. So I do think there is an opportunity in that 10-13 meeting to get more feedback, but I don't know if that meets your expectations.
Yes, thank you. So my expectations are pretty much just to get whatever public feedback that the public would like to share and then just go over it, read it, consider it as a decision-maker and a policy-maker. Does that answer your question?
It does. Yeah, and I think that's what we're doing with our public engagement findings and the parade that we'll provide you after the 13.
And I feel like that was the only option to ask, but go ahead, Zan.
With respect to that, I think that it would be useful in terms of the October 13th presentation to have a very streamlined and simplified chart that compared the two sites in terms of location and access to other parts of the county, or the Sheriff's Office in terms of development costs, initial purchase costs. You know, it may only need to have three lines, but we need to be able to share that as we move forward. And the other is that, I guess there's, it would be a fourth criterion, and that is the expansion potential in the South Side and potential use for other, potential for other uses, even if it's just to lease or sell a portion of it in future. So, yeah, but a simplified comparison so that folks have a better sense for the pros and cons beyond just not in my backyard.
And that was the other request I was going to make, is just for all information to be as concise as possible, you know, whether it's for the public or whether it's for, especially for me, I like clean, concise, to-the-point information.
Nancy, I do as well. Just for the complicated program someday. So I will do my best to that. What I was going to say is maybe for our next, or meeting next Tuesday, I can take a shot at the, you know, those three to five salient points that we share for the 10-13 meeting and bring them back to you and see if they resonate.
Commissioners, I'm going to go just a little bit further to just make sure we have clarity. Nick, I have very few opportunities between now and the time that you're deliberating to work with the ops team. And so your feedback today was helpful in terms of additional information you need. Commissioner Rose, I heard you suggest that we kind of distill down the information from the CAC and the TAC. And we've certainly heard your desire to know that about the public as well as it relates to a specific recommendation. Are you asking the ops team to take into consideration all of that information and then provide the board with a recommended site? Or are you not needing the ops team to go that far? And the reason that I belabor this is it will dictate how the ops team spends their time over the course of the next couple of meetings.
Yeah, I was going to talk about that. I guess my reference would be to have the ops team or the other committees do pluses and minuses, but not necessarily come to a specific site conclusion. I mean, I think there's enough things that we need to nail down that I'm still in the information gathering mode.
Nancy, what's your sense?
I agree with Pat. I think input would be great, pros and cons. I think input would be great, pros and cons, but not necessarily a hard recommendation. You know, I think going over their pros and cons will give us an idea of where they lean without them having to, you know, make a firm, a line in the sand that could potentially, you know, cause grief in the community or whatnot.
Sounds good. Is that clear enough, Nick and Joe?
Yes, I would ask. Do you want the pro con to be more explicit than, you know, than this analysis I shared with you today? This is, this is really data, and you can kind of see the pro con, but it's not necessarily listed that way, so.
Nick, I like what you did with the list and then, like, notes on the next page.
Okay. Others?
I guess, Nancy, Nick, what I hear you asking is what more do we want aside from what you've already produced? And I think that it might be that we just need to get down to those top criteria that we're discussing and then indicate where the uncertainties are and what's, and then what the leanings of each of those different advisory bodies are and based on what. So the perspectives of the TAC and CAC and ops team might be based solely on the data, or they might be based somewhat on less tangible elements, and it'd be helpful to know that. Anything else at this point in time?
Commissioner, I'd like, Nick, just to remind the board of the next steps over your, the course of your next couple of meetings, just in terms of when we're meeting again, and just so it's on your radar.
Sure, so we're meeting next Tuesday. The following Tuesday is goal setting. We're not meeting on that occasion unless there's need or desire on your part. And then the October 13 large public meeting is day after goal setting, and then we meet on the 19th, Tuesday, the 19th, week of October 18th. And that's our, we hope to have a final decision at that point, in part so that we can, you know, be sitting down to, so that Vance can begin drafting PSAs and sharing them with you. If we need to have one more opportunity on the 26th, we will. But goal is to make a determination on October 19. You're welcome.
So I guess our next decision is whether to go into executive session now or after we do our information sharing. Do you all have a preference?
Maybe after, so we're not switching back and forth?
Will Nick us here? That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, keep on this topic.
I am looking back for the number of the, there it is. At this point, then, we will just enter executive session under Oregon revised statute 192.6602E, and we will clear the room for that executive session.
Yes, we'll need a few moments for John to pack up his equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you, John.